I will call the December 10, 2019 meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. We will, as we always do, observe a moment of reflection and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. While I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to ask Councilman Brad Stipes, if he can lead.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will move directly into public hearing, which is an amendment to Chapter 28, Solid Waste and Recycling on Christiansburg Town Code regarding the elimination of dumpster service and provision of recycling carts to commercial customers. Is there anyone here to address this issue? Hearing none, I will close the public hearings. Under the consent agenda, we have several items. The approval of the minutes, November 12, 14, 18, and November the 19. Resolution recognizing Chris Tuck for his eight years of service to county board supervisors. Approval of an amendment to a professional engineering contract with Matten and Craig in the amount of $30,000 for additional construction, engineering, and inspection services for following branch intersection project. To reschedule the public hearing to February 25, 2020, for consideration of solid waste flow control ordinance. And schedule a public hearing for January the 28, 2020, for a conditional use permit request by Steve LaPlante for residential uses permitted in the R3 multifamily residential zoning district for property located at 1305 Radford Street, tax map number 525-2-49B. In the B3 general business district, the property is designated as business commercial on the future land use map of the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan.
May I make the motion to approve the consent agenda out of the Senate?
At second. Motion in the second.
I didn't, I didn't, I have a comment on the, on the one of the minutes, and if Mr. Bishop, Mr. Showalter will pleasure this. On the meeting of the 19th, there was a citizen comment, Lisa Lucas Gardner, that questioned the validity of asking Ms. Hicks to sign a nondisclosure agreement to participate in closed meetings, and that request was to participate in closed meetings prior to her taking her seat on council, which would begin January 1. That's my, that's my suggestion for the minutes, yes. That's my request for revision.
You want to have that added?
Yes.
Any other discussions?
No, that's it.
All right.
The clarification.
Mr. Bishop, are you a...
Yes, I still make the recommendation of approve the consent agenda with the corrections as noted.
Calm me, I'll second. So, you have second, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Pepper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 6-0, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Under introductions and presentations, we have Montgomery County Clerk of Circuit Courts, Erica Connor, to administer oath of office for town council, Sam Bishop, Joanna Hicks, and Henry Showalter, with terms beginning January the 1, 2020, to December 31, 2023. Madam Clerk. And if you are being sworn in tonight, and you have family that you would like to come forward with you while you're sworn in, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you, Mayor Barber. Thank you, Town Council, for having me. It's always an honor and a pleasure to come do this for returning Town Council members and newly elected ones. So, we'll go first. As Mayor Barber said, bring your family or friends with you. Ladies first, Joanna Hicks. Ms. Hicks, I am going to say thanks, but you'll just repeat after me, and then we'll sign your oath when you're done. Okay? Will you raise your right hand, please? Repeat after me. I, Joanna Hicks...
Hi, Joanna Hicks.
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
I mean swear and affirm.
...that I will support...
That I will support.
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
...of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...all the duties...
All the duties.
...incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
...as a member of Town Council...
As a member of Town Council.
...for Christiansburg...
Christiansburg.
...for a term of office...
For a term of office.
...commencing January 1, 2020...
January 1, 2020.
...and expiring...
And expiring.
...on December 31...
On December 31.
...2023.
2023.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
...and judgment.
And judgment.
Congratulations.
Joanna, I have, this was delivered to Town Hall.
Age before beauty.
This is the certification from the election officials as to your election attempt. Congratulations, and look forward to serving with you.
Thank you. All right, I'm not going to do age before beauty, we'll go alphabetical. Mr. Bishop. All right, it's a pleasure to be here. Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sam Bishop...
I, Sam Bishop.
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...all the duties incumbent upon me...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
...as a member of the Town Council...
As a member of the Town Council.
...for Christiansburg...
For Christiansburg.
...for a term of office...
For a term of office.
...commencing January 1, 2020...
Commencing January 1, 2020.
...and expiring on December 31, 2023.
And expiring December 31, 2023.
According to the best of my judgment...
According to the best of my judgment.
...and abilities.
And abilities.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. I need your signature before we go.
Okay. I'll come back. Just take it out, I'm next. I'll take it back.
August 11.
Please, don't embarrass me in front of my people.
Raise your right hand. I, Henry Showalter...
I, Henry Showalter.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...or affirm...
Or affirm.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...all the duties incumbent upon me...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
...as a member of Town Council...
As a member of Town Council.
...for Christiansburg...
For Christiansburg.
...for a term of office...
For a term of office.
...commencing January 1, 2020...
Commencing January 1, 2020.
...and expiring on December 31, 2023.
And expiring on December 31, 2023.
According to the best of my judgment.
According to the best of my judgment.
Congratulations. Henry, you have to sign. Let's make it official.
That's on the wrong place.
Well, I'll tell you what, that's why I bring two.
Yeah, that's why.
I'm prepared.
Look at that. Erica, Erica, good job.
Erica, I want to thank you so much for giving us the time to not go to do this very important item of business for the town. As always, you serve the citizens well.
Thank you. I'm happy to do it, and I told Mrs. Stipes I would provide her the copies this week.
Very good.
Thank you, all again, for having me.
Introductions of new employees, John Curtner, Public Works Department, and Zach Butler.
Good afternoon. Like this time to introduce that, he comes to work for us in October 14. When he's not working, he enjoys writing music and playing it with his band, and some of his hobbies is going on live, watching live tour music, and going on road trips, and having fun if he's free, and when he's not working for us so hard.
Thank you very much, Zach. Bishop, Public Works Department, to introduce John Duddy.
Good evening. My name is J.W. Bishop, supervisor of the Ward Tree Plant, and here to see and introduce our new maintenance technician, John Johnson Duddy. Let's see here, sorry. He has mechanic maintenance background, and came from Norfolk Southern real well. He's a proud father of a five-year-old son named Collins. He has a soft spot for animals. He volunteers his times as a caretaker at a cemetery, and he enjoys camping, fishing, hiking, and he is proud to join our team at the plant.
Good job, thank you very much. Next, we have Blacksburg Transit Director, Tom Fox, to provide an update on services. Tom?
Well, good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me to come and talk to you about the state of public transportation in Christiansburg. We've had a really good year, and I'm really excited to give you some of the numbers of that, of how we've improved ridership in your community. Let me just start by recapping briefly. The services that we provide for the town of Christiansburg is three different types of services. One is the Explorer Route, which is kind of a fixed route with a fixed schedule, but it does deviate off the route to make drop-offs and pickups. We have a Blue Explorer and a Gold Explorer. We have the Go-Anywhere Service, which is a demand-response reservation-based service that serves the entire town of Christiansburg. And we have a commuter route that runs from Christiansburg to Blacksburg in the morning and one trip in the afternoon. Those services run Monday to Friday, except for, except for the Go-Anywhere, which runs Monday to Saturday. We run about 12,000 hours of service per year with seven vehicles. So, as far as recent developments, in January of this year, you all approved additional funding to expand our Explorer Route, which we put to good use. I can tell you, we've created two separate loops, a Blue Loop and a Gold Loop. We've extended the route out on Radford Street and Roanoke Street, added 17 stops. In conjunction with that increase, we've, with frequency has improved to one, one trip per hour. And as a result, since January, the ridership on the Explorer has, has increased by 52% year, January through October. So, we're really, really pleased with those numbers. The Go-Anywhere Service, and so let me just tell you how many trips a month, about 1,700 trips per month on the Explorer. The Go-Anywhere Service is that, the demand-response reservation-based service that carries about 850 customers per month. And we have noticed that, that as we expanded the service on the Explorer, we think some of the customers are moving from the Go-Anywhere to the Explorer, because the Go-Anywhere is staying about flat or actually decreasing, which is really, it's really not a bad thing if we can encourage folks to ride to explore, because it's a much more cost-effective service to provide. So, we'll continue to monitor that, but that, I think we kind of like the way that trend is going. On the last service, the commuter, that averages about 175 trips per month, we have seen a big jump in the ridership since, since tech went back in session this, for the fall semester. So, we're hoping that's a positive sign for more folks to ride from Christiansburg to tech, either for, as students or as faculty and staff. So, a few other developments that, from this year is, we worked with Radford Transit, which already runs a route that goes through Christiansburg to Blacksburg and stops, and had stopped near the mall. We worked with them to add a stop in downtown Christiansburg, so that's had no cost to the town, no cost to the BT. So, that's just another, another option for folks to take, to take advantage of for, for public transportation in town. We did a, we did a summer, a summer ridership program for high school students throughout Montgomery County Schools. Any high school student could ride BT for free in Christiansburg or throughout our system by just showing their, their student ID, and that, we got a lot, a lot of positive feedback on that, and I think it would be our intent to, to have that again next year, with even more outreach and more information to the students, to get, to get kids used to using public transportation as they get on the age. We did implement some bus stop improvements in town. In the past year, the most significant of that is at the pull-ups. We put public, the concrete pad in a bus shelter, and the town Public Works Department was very helpful in getting that work done. So, in terms of future plans, we are working with, with the town on monitoring developments. We know there's a lot of development going on in Christiansburg, and making sure that our services match up and serve those new developments. So, we'll continue to do that. We do have plans and grant money available to, to do bus stop improvements in a number of other bus stop locations, which we hope will be able to do over the next year. And we're continuing to monitor the commuter route. The ridership has not been how we think it can be on that commuter route that runs, that runs between Christiansburg and Blacksburg, and working with, with the town staff to, to figure out a way, is there something else we need to do with the route? We know we can do more with marketing it, and, and just looking at various options to improve that. So, those, those are the three things that are kind of on our radar for, for the next, really for the next six months or so. So, I just, when I do my research for tonight, I noticed that, that we started the Christiansburg service just about exactly 10 years ago. It was November of 2009. So, we've come a long way, and we really appreciate the, the support of the town. The town has been instrumental in making this happen with funding and support of Blacksburg Transit. We do have a working group, I don't know if you all know that, but we meet about every, every couple of months. Mayor Barber, Councilman Showalter are in the working group, along with Randy and Andrew, and other people come in as, as needed to help talk about developments, talk about things that we can do for the service, how to market it. I think we've done a lot with marketing over the past year or so. And, and so overall, the system ridership is up about 13% from, from this town for the same months of last year. Which in the majority of that is Explorer, but commuter's moving in the right direction. And the Go-Anywhere is really a very needed service, and for, for folks that are not within walking distance of the Explorer route. So, that's, that's something that we think needs to, needs, is to stay a part of the So, lastly, you've probably heard that Blacksburg Transit won an award from the American Public Transportation Association as the best small system in North America. So, we were, it's something we're very proud of, and something you all should be very proud of too, because you're an instrumental part of, of our, of our system and support from Christiansburg to recognize the need and help step up and fund and support public transportation. It means a lot to us. So, I would like to, to give you a little token of our appreciation as I wrap up. I have a plaque over here, like this presentation.
Okay. We did a very small number of these plaques for our partners, and you said they're my key partners, so the message is, we could not have achieved this without you. So, thank you very much for your support of public transportation. Tom, thank you very much, and I, we have been pleased over the last 10 years, the, the steady growth, and I think it's even more growth that's happened in the last four or five years with a lot of changes, but we could not do this without you. And I want you to know that we will find a, a very, very prominent place for this to be only in our town hall.
Thank you very much.
So, you got all those steel-lit buses in yet?
Not quite yet.
Can we ask Mr. Fox a question?
Sure.
Okay. Hopefully, I'll put you on the spot, but with the new parking ride, of course, we're talking about train service and all that, and we know that's hopefully coming, but the new parking ride out here with all the, I think there's four or five bus systems that run through that, has there been a, is there, are you aware of a trend with that? Have you noticed a growth with service to the parking ride, or ridership, or maybe you don't have that, should have given, posed a question to you before?
I have to do a little research on this.
I'd be interested to know.
Yeah. Of course, Smart Way is the, probably the largest user in that, in that lot, but we have a stop there. If you allow me to do a little research and get back to you on that.
Would be interesting, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Fox, nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Fox? Next, we'll go to citizens' comments. If you would like to address council on any item, if you would give us your name and your address, limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's Lisa Lucas Gardner, 11 Flieger Street. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I, did I say something in reference to the proposed Second Amendment Sanctuary by the Board of Supervisors and Advisors? I'm, I'm really concerned about that. I, I'm a big constitutional person, and I, I have guns, I have duty guns, I was raised with guns. I have too many guns, actually. I don't even know how many guns I have, but that's a bad thing, right? I don't need that many guns, but this proposal by a few hundred people who are really crazy about getting this passed, I want to remind everybody, a few hundred does not represent thousands in our county, and that's my concern too. I'm sure all of us are divided. Some of us are pro-gun, and some of us are anti-gun, but just today, another police officer was killed, you know, five people killed up in New Jersey. It seems like shootings are happening every day, and somebody says, the bad guys will still have guns, take away our guns. Nobody's going to take away your guns, and I think the intent, the intent of the framers in the Constitution at the time the gun rights were passed, Second Amendment, was one shot. You had one shot, you had one black-powered rifle shot. Right now, if we have to do it all over again and say that people have the right to have an unlimited amount of, an arsenal of weapons, I think the lawmakers would say, wait a minute, we don't think that's a good idea. Maybe we should limit it or put some restrictions on it. But anyway, as far as our council goes, in our town, I'm concerned about it, I don't agree with it, and then we get into Dillon's Rule, and we get into the state, all of these things that the people don't know, they don't understand the law or know the laws. Tell me what I'm not, Mr. Mayor. The second thing is, I wanted to congratulate Joanna Hicks tonight. I'm a big, big feminist, of course, I know you hate that word, but seeing women elected in our government and more minorities in our town, I'm really excited about. We've come a long way in the last 15 or 20 years, so I want to congratulate her as an immigrant, as a woman, as a mother of poor children, what she's doing is remarkable. So, welcome to our town, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
Hello, my name is Frank Shannon. My wife and I moved to the town in August. We live at 135 Haymaker Street. I just came in really to say how much I like living here, it's, it's a nice place, and how wonderful the Aquatic Center is, I've been coming there. This, this nice gentleman over here was, I was talking to him, and we were talking about what a nice place it was, what a good deal it was, and the council meeting came up somehow, and I decided I should come in and say how great the Aquatic Center is. It's a real lifeline for me, getting this one is very good for my health. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chris Wallace, 1370 years, in Brickley Street. Let me just preface my comments by saying that I don't, I don't know the people at the Aquatic Center Advisory, and there's nothing against him or Jessica. I actually find him quite thorough at his job on the planning commission, but I kind of think that, that just simply reappointing people when their terms expire is the wrong way to go about it. Just as with having council, you're not simply reappointed when your term expires. We have a process, and sometimes the people find that we think someone else may be a better fit for the government than who is currently sitting. I feel that by not going through the application process like you do and treating it as vacancy, which is what it is, it's a vacancy, a term expires, a vacancy occurs, and not going through the interview process, that you may be missing out on someone that possibly could be a better fit at some point in time. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Good evening, Mayor Barber and council members of Christiansburg. Thank you for your time and appreciate the chance to speak this evening. My name is Alicia Wall, I live on Denhill Road in Christiansburg. First, I'd just like to congratulate council members Bishop and Showalter on your reelection. And a special congratulations to an amazing person, Joanna Hicks, for her first-place election where she was sworn in tonight. Speaking of swearing in, Councilwoman Hubbard and Councilwoman Sachs, you both swore an oath of office, promising to support the Constitution of the United States and of Virginia. So, imagine my surprise when I read in the newspaper articles of both of you actively and publicly working against the constitutional rights of your constituents. By passing ordinances for restrictions on picketing and protesting, you're trampling on our rights. By publicly calling for gun control, you're actively submerging the will of the people that tramples on our constitutional rights. You work for us, we give you the power to govern us, and that means to stand up for us and not yourself by protecting our rights and not going against them. Any infringement on our rights is unacceptable and will not be tolerated. But in closing, I just wanted to say thank you, that by going after our rights so publicly, you've awoken the sleeping giant of we, the people, and we are wide awake now, and we are paying very close attention, and when we go one, we go all. Thank you, and have a good night.
Excuse me, what was your address? I'm sorry.
Denhill Road.
Denhill Road?
Yes.
Okay. It's a county, I believe. Okay. All righty. Anyone else to address council? Hearing none, I will close the citizens' comments section. We have committee reports from Mr. Stipes and Mr. Collins, street committee report and recommendations on subdivision plan for NRV Marketplace LLC, showing a new parcel L from a portion of a revised lot.
Very simple action by council tonight. It's a continuation of the development of the marketplace property.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
It's all right. It's a continuation of the development of the marketplace property as it evolves, and Mr. Warren is pulling up the plaque that the street committee reviewed. Okay, so, to get you oriented, the, I'll just go ahead and step up here and show.
You want to hit the kill switch?
Yes. This is North Denhill Street down here. This is North Franklin Street down here. This is the new entrance. This is where the RVs was just torn down. The new RVs is right over here. But this, this entrance comes up to parcel L. This is a, this is a new parcel. It's, it's being referred to as a bank parcel, so you might suspect what might be going on there. We're calling it the bank parcel. But this is, this is the parcel that we're acting on, or we're going, the street committee is going to recommend approval of the plat is presented, but it's, it's one more parcel that's being carved out. The parent parcel, which is the larger mall property, is still, as you can see, 25.7 acres. So, as the, as the mall, the marketplace continues to develop, we may see a few more of these, but it is a sign, it's a sign of progress, and the street committee has reviewed that it conforms with our subdivision ordinance, and the street committee reviews, or recommends approval of the plat, and that recommendation is also a motion.
I second that. Have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. That is it.
Mr. Bishop and Ms. Sacks, Central Business District Committee report and recommendation on creation of Public Art Advisory Council and Downtown Clock.
Yes. Do you want to take the clock, Randy?
Sure. Okay. We've researched the Downtown Clock. The company that originally manufactured it is no longer in business. We did reach out to other clock companies for estimate on replacing, basically customized a new clock face and hands. Estimate on that was $4,100. We also got estimates on replacing the, simply the faces with different verbiage, with metal, metal faces. An estimate on both faces would be $540, and the recommendation of the committee was to proceed with the faces. We've got, I guess, three different versions of potential verbiage for those. Bring it up here in a second.
Randy, could you tell the people that don't know where the clock's located?
It's located downtown, a little bit past the Old Town Mall, between Hickok Street and Franklin Street, and it's on the northern, northern side of the sidewalks. It's on the Old Town Mall side. Just some potential verbiage for, "Welcome to Downtown," "Welcome to Christiansburg," or "Welcome to Main Street." And the company just kind of threw, threw those out as potential suggestions, but if we do go the route, which, like I say, is a recommendation, of replacing the metal faces, we can use whatever verbiage council can see fit.
And the reason being, the clock's broke. It broke for years.
It's on the right side of the.
I think it'd be the way home.
It's on the right side, I guess.
And something to add there, too, is we did discuss, well, if it's a one-time purchase, you know, maybe we could do that, because the clock was donated by a local citizen, Mr. Poff, which was very generous, but the maintenance cost going forward really just seemed prohibitive. So, as much as we would like that option, it did, you know, when we discussed it, just ended up being ineffective in cost. So, we were recommending this as an alternative.
On subway on that, we'd have reached out to Mr. Poff, and he would rather go with this type of design versus put a digital clock in, because we want to stay with the scene, the scene of the downtown area. So, we are in contact with Mr. Poff, because like I said, what's going, he's doing, donated the clock, so we'd like to keep him involved.
And the purpose tonight is just to ask if there was any contribution to which one, if anybody was drawn to one of the scenes over another one.
I'd really like the "Welcome to Main Street." Now, just my thoughts, but.
Okay. Anyone else?
That's a moment. Welcome to Christiansburg.
I can't remember the last time I went against a committee recommendation, so I wish the, I actually wish the committee had a recommendation.
Well, at that time, we didn't have these designs before us.
Yeah. This is the first time we're seeing the options, but we did, you know, we talked about the town seal, and actually, the town seal's everywhere. You know, once you're in Christiansburg, you know you're in Christiansburg. So, we said, you know, why don't we play on the fact that it is downtown and it is on Main Street? So, I believe those were preferences we led to. We were just looking for some feedback.
Can you put "Welcome to Main Street" on one side and "Welcome to Downtown" on the other?
I don't see why not.
I don't. Do you have any, any preferences?
I don't.
I don't have a preference.
I, I would like to just pass that back to Central Business for a recommendation.
Sounds good.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay.
I like that.
So, we do have a lot to talk about, so I, I do apologize in advance. We have a lot of updates to give you. One of them is going to be on the creation of a public art advisory board, and if you want, do you have the?
I have the coffee here.
Okay. Well, what happened, in, in Central Business, we determined that there was a lot of activity in artwork, and there was a lot of interest in arts and culture and artwork, and it became cumbersome for Central Business to handle everything that we wanted to do. So, we looked at how many tasks we had and how many fell into a certain area, and all of the artwork seemed to be somewhere where we could put it in its own committee that would advise Central Business that comes back to council, and we were hoping it would get more accomplished, more traction, more support than those of us who were, you know, already stretched thin in the committee. So, Andrew pulled up some information on creating this board, and I'm sure that anybody can get.
Casey Jenkins has done a lot, you know, a lot of the light work, and we worked together to kind of come up with this, really, the advisory model that would make, if we pull together really an annual plan that they would look to, to carry out, and then any major recommendations of the plan they would bring to you all for, for approval. So, it would act as an advisory committee, and it would be, it would be soundpointed, and I have been able to hold up any of the bylaws.
So, it would be an advisory committee reporting to the business downtown. Do you like a subcommittee?
Well, that's how I saw it. How, do you guys see it going straight to council or to CB?
I saw it was a subcommittee.
And I would prefer that, too, because I would trust your judgment on, you know.
That works. That works good for us, do you think? Okay.
So, as it is designed now, that it would go, the recommendations would come straight to, to town council, so that, that would be a change. If it, if they were to go back to Central Business, that would be a change from what the draft had is before you this evening.
I'm glad we have draft.
Yeah, exactly. It is.
I would support that modification. Would you, Mr. Bishop?
Going back to council?
No, come, no, the recommendations would go to Central Business Committee, and then they would consider those and then make a recommendation to council.
Okay. Is that?
I've read all of these.
Yeah.
We'll, we will work on the application process, which there will be an application process to this committee.
Yes, it's already been drafted, and if it is something that, that council would like to pursue after this evening, that's something that we could, we could post as early as the beginning of next week to start to generate some, some interest.
Marty, can you give us some publicity on that, to the paper? At least, is it informed?
Through the Arts Council, too.
Yeah.
There's still one.
Thank you, Mary.
This is directly related to Mr. and Ms. Thompson and Ms. Nixon's gift that they, the fund that they set up.
Partially. Partially, but we had a massive list of ideas and tasks that we wanted to accomplish, and we found that so many of them kept being added to the next meeting because we couldn't get to them. So, coupled with their donation and our need together, it just made sense to create this subcommittee.
And that's a recommendation from?
From the Central Business Committee, yes.
Okay.
Do we need a motion or a head nod on that?
Go ahead. Let's get it on.
All right. I make a motion for town council to approve the public arts subcommittee, and drafted by the town, the bylaws are in front of us.
Just a second. Okay. Any comments or questions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's six eight.
Thank you. Andrew, do you want to do facade grant next, if you're ready?
So, we did cook the clock.
Yep.
We best refer it back. We're not going to act on it.
Correct.
Okay.
And right now, we're just going through the Central Business updates. Okay, so, earlier, we have a facade grant, which is coupled dollar-for-dollar by local businesses who apply, and that is to, you know, improve the outside of their building, and we received thirteen applications. We awarded six grants, four in Cambria, and two were in downtown locations. I mean, you can see here some of the awards and how much they are, and the biggest thing, I think, is the pictures. So, this is what they call the dewdrop, and you can see where they're starting to paint the bottom. They're enhancing all of the trim. From one side to the other, it's not massive, but they're in the works of that. It's turning out very nicely. Electro, electrical supply was the first one, I think, to jump on board. They have a huge showing, and I think, I hope everybody agrees, it's a very nice change. It fits in with the Cambria motifs, the history, and they're not done yet, which is great. It's inspired them to keep going. Okay, Chair Doctor, they did have some changes, mainly in the windows and a fresh awning, and hopefully that she will also continue some improvements. This is Palmer Grocery Store. That's a pretty big change, I think. It's very nice. It's, again, sticking with the history, and now there's some nice, wonderful business in there, and it's lively and energetic, and that's exactly what we were hoping for. Yeah, Old Town Barber. They also added some awnings on their top windows. If you can see their burgundy on the right photo, they've added wrought iron in their ramp, and what else were they doing with this one, Andrew?
So, they, they replaced some windows, as well as outside of the, outside of the grant, they, they've also done a new sign, a more decorative sign around, border around their existing sign, and, and they're really going with a wrought iron theme, with some more decorative pieces around it, and the owner and his bonds is also looking at on a, replacing the windows on the side of the house as well.
So, I think in this case, too, it's a, it's an idea that jump-started some other ideas. That's correct. This is the Iron Tree Brewing Company, and although they've had windows covered, there's a lot of activity going on, and the outside there is a rendition of what it is hoped to look like.
Good luck to the council, ladies.
So, that is just a short, quick update on the facade grant program. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bishop. He's going to talk about our current agenda.
All right. Once again, like I said, this has been a busy year, and we had a lot of stuff thrown to us, and we put a lot of stuff back out to other members of the town. One thing I want to cover is the farmer's market. We were presented with several different designs that could be used on Hickok Street. And once again, these are just drafts, nothing's in stone yet. We are looking at making it permanent close or making it where we can open Hickok Street back up into pedestrian traffic or even the street itself when we're not using it, because I know there's a lot of concern about it being closed when it's not in use. So, once again, these are just draft designs, and hopefully, when we get them back, we will present these to town councils to take a look at. The Virginia Tourist Rally Grant, the town was awarded $3,000, and by public committee, they have chosen to use the grassy areas at the great road to Main Street to make this a gathering place, anywhere people can come and have picnics, gather, weddings, or whatever. And also, Mr. Markin has said he will donate months to this cause also, so that's, he could probably give us another $3,000, so that'd be $6,000 we could use to improve that, improve that grassy area, and hopefully, once again, bring people downtown, and that's our goal. But right now, once again, that's not in stone. Another thing we're looking at doing this year, again, as we did last year, is the Safe Ride Home Program, and basically, I think the last year, we had success with. I don't think there were any DUI arrests last year. Am I correct, Chief?
That's, oh, New Year's Eve, that's correct.
New Year's Eve, okay. New Year's Eve. New Year's Eve, don't have DUI arrests. So, our goal is, hopefully, to get that done again this year, and once again, we just want, I guess, let's pass this on the forehead, not from town council. Go ahead and go to the same program again.
I think that's up in discussion by mayor and council later, so we'll, officially then.
Okay.
Unless we can skip that, just with a head nod, and say we're going to do it.
Well, I mean, I didn't read that far down. If I did, I missed it. Another thing that was brought to our attention was, you know, the town has put banners up on the light posts downtown, and one of my council members, Mr. Joe Walter, brought to our attention that, why can we not just leave up the US flag up and change every other pole? Once again, this would save time. Man, I was doing that. The committee had no problem with it, but we referred it back to Public Works to get their input, see if they have any concerns, and so far, we haven't heard anything back from Public Works. But right now, I can see, we can see where it will save time, you know, instead of changing every flag downtown, change every other one, and leave the American flag displayed at all times, except for during Christmas. So, that's on our radar. We covered arts, then. Okay, and so now, we are wrapping up this weekend with the Christmas Parade, which is on Friday. We also have in the Winterland, which is on Saturday downtown, and this should wrap up for the year.
All right. Thank you. And I'll continue with the things that are on our tracking list. These are things that we have discussed. They're in the works. They're not finished yet, which is farmer's market is always on our list. We, we talk about that often. The wayfinding signs, directional signs throughout the town. We get an update from Public Relations on that. We talk about the Hickok Street closures. Mr. Bishop said, "We are looking at many alternatives for the, the space, and one of them is to possibly keep one side of the road open for traffic at times that's not being used, to listen to what the citizens have told us that they want, but also listen to what the farmer's market folks have told us that they want, which is nice space, covered, et cetera." So, there's a lot to be done in that area. We are working on a Main Street American Grant Proposal for creating an entrepreneurial culture. We have promotions next year, New Year's campaign, new visions, talking about tourism grants with downtown and Cambria marketing. We have on our agenda opportunity zones. How will they help us? How can we get the businesses to take advantage of them? And cutout figures that the kids can enjoy with police, fire, rescue, public events. They stick their face behind it and take some pictures that say Christiansburg. We also just installed the downtown lights. They only can be up for so many months, so they do not damage the trees, so you'll probably see them into the first of the year for a while. And we're working on a downtown webcam, which would be 24/7, facing downtown Main Street to be accessed by anyone online. We have done a quick test of it, but it's not ready to completely roll out yet. And at the request of some, we've had a request for historic signs, so this may end up going into the subcommittee, but it would be arts, history, and culture signs. For example, our attachment to Dr. Pepper with the town is just one example. We have an idea for a downtown love sign. It was originally thrown into the rally grant to see if there was enough interest, but since they picked the pocket park, that topic will come back into Central Business. We have a community piano project. I don't know if you've seen it outside the McAdoo's area in the mall, but we do hope to discuss how the community can come together to decorate it. We see some cute handprints from kids on it or something like that. And then also, the downtown Cambria Arts Initiative, which falls into the new subcommittee as well. So, we've had a busy year, and I hope I can speak for Mr. Bishop as well, but we thank everyone. We've had a lot of great input. We've had a busy year. The town staff has yet to yell at us or throw anything, but we've kept them extremely busy, especially the PR department, Public Works, our event planner. So, I just want to say thank you to Andrew and Randy and council for your support. support this year, and we hope to get as much done next year. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I, I want to commend the rest of you, Sam and staff. I've never seen so many projects done in a year to enhance the quality of life of our residents, and Mike and I both have served on that committee. So, um, I'm really proud of you guys. You guys did a great job.
I think that's.
Thank you.
I think all council feels, feels you guys, we owe you something for doing such good work and motivating downtown as well as you're doing.
I hope the mayor will, uh, keep the same committee intact for the next year.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You ride the big horse. Uh, actually, what I had thought, and I talked a little bit about this with Andrew and Randy and maybe a few of your council members, depending on the grant, I know that we get $3,000, and Mr. Larkin may put three in. I'd like to, for council, to consider matching that with another $6,000. That may allow us to do some other projects that were right, didn't quite make the cut. So, uh, I will bring that forward to you all first of the year. Well, we got money, a little bit. Didn't say, didn't use slush fun words, Val, don't get me wrong. Okay. Very good. Uh, discussion in action by mayor and council, a resolution to approve budget modification number two, fiscal year 2019, 2020. And that is, Val, is that yours?
This was, uh, the budget modification that we presented, I think, three meetings ago. We had the public hearing on last week. Um, primarily, the whole budget modification is the rollover of the gap for projects fund, uh, for projects that didn't, that were allocated but didn't complete in last fiscal year, and the numbers altered a little differently from the actual approved budget.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to approve the budget modification number two for FYI 2019, 2020.
A motion of second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, next is a resolution to appropriate funds per budget modification, number two for the FYI 2019, 2020 budget.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution to appropriate funds per budget modification number two for FYI 2019, 2020.
Second.
A motion of second. Collins, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six out of, thank you. Um, resolution to authorize the filing of a 2020 construction grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission. Is that yours, Andrew?
Yes, sir. And as you're aware, we have a, a planning grant that we've been carrying out with the help of the Regional Commission, and we brought on Hill Studio to help us with some design. And, um, and in November, council heard a presentation, uh, from, from Jennifer Willsey, as well as James, James Jones from, uh, from the Regional Commission. Uh, this evening, we have a resolution, uh, in front of council that will allow staff to move forward with a 2020 ARC construction grant, which would, uh, allow for us to apply for up to $500,000, uh, worth of matching funds for a project. As we have gotten public input, we have narrowed in on, on projects that we think could be eligible for this. Uh, with the storm drain project happening downtown on Hickok Street, uh, we are able to leverage that money as matching funds. And, uh, and so we have been focusing, uh, the, uh, the project as, uh, as the farmers market structure and gathering place to submit for this 2020, uh, ARC plant, uh, construction grant. So, uh, what is in front of you this evening is a resolution, uh, to, to look at, uh, you, what, what has, what Hill Studio has come up with. And as, just as a quick reminder, uh, in 2016, uh, the town was one of 27 communities to receive a local food local places, uh, grant, and, uh, we had community workshops in, in October, and came up with a draft action plan, uh, for the promotion of downtown farmers market. And, uh, and we really looked at a lot of different designs for that farmers market, how could it fit with loading, uh, with parking trucks and moving on spaces and where the vendors could go. It could be a cold sack, or it could be on one side or the other, uh, or on both sides with folks in the middle. And, uh, and this was a conceptual drawing. Uh, and after this, in 2016, we really saw that we really needed to narrow in on, uh, using the right of the, uh, which we have about 45 feet of right of way on the Hickok Street. So, so as this, uh, kept percolating, uh, uh, through the years, and then, and then really rose to the top as far as, uh, what we heard from citizen comments, uh, through this planning grant process, uh, we kept with a linear arcade or linear farmers market structure idea, which is the best, kind of, uh, use of this, of this space being 45 feet in width, and really trying to create a community place downtown. Uh, so that we really did look at just using that, that 45 feet, and we looked at different types of designs for farmers market structures. Could you do a ser- a serpentine farmers market structure? Uh, could you do, uh, three stalls here and three stalls down the street? What we really found was that, uh, in looking at kind of a local example for inspiration, the Riddick City Market, is, uh, we could do a, a linear arcade, uh, on one side or of the street or the other. This particular, uh, puzzle would be next to the current building. This is, this is how the farmer market in that Riddick, uh, functions when, when market street is closed. Uh, but, uh, so what, uh, one idea was that, you know, we could have the farmers market structure here and really take advantage of, uh, the, uh, the building here, as it is currently developed, but also as, uh, as the, uh, current property owner has indicated, that, that they would like to, to rebuild and potentially do a 40,000 square foot, three-story building, uh, there. And, uh, and then how could those two buildings play off, or how could the structure in the building play off each other? So if you have activated spaces along the side of the building, uh, and there's been conversation of, of could the town, uh, you know, work with them on a restroom that would be available for the public as well, uh, but you could have spaces along here, and then, and then really have a nice corridor between the structure and the building, and then, uh, have about 15 feet here. I'll show you a schematic of what that would look like. So you would have a structure here, and then, and then potentially, if your building here is about 15 feet of blocking area. Now, this would be a new, uh, this would be a new, uh, uh, a, a new material. Whether it, it wouldn't be asphalt, it would be stamped concrete, or it could be pavers, depending on what the budget would allow. Uh, and, uh, and it's, uh, what Hill Studio has come up with today is that this would be, uh, a retractable awning, uh, on a wood arcade structure. And we'd have lights underneath the light, so it'd be a nice lit area to walk. And, uh, and in this setup, it would be, uh, you would still be allowed, you could still do one-way traffic even when the farmers market was, was operating. And so this would be within the 45 feet of right of way. You could also do kind of a festival setup, or if you had a busy market, you could, uh, you could close the whole street and have, uh, have tents on the opposite side of the street from the farmers market structure. And, and again, this would still allow for, uh, I did point before, the two-way circulation to the parking lot from Commerce Street, uh, to, to College. And that, that is an important component through all these designs that, that is maintained. So this is what the farmers market kind of festival or full market would, uh, could look like. And this is, uh, if it were to be, uh, you know, a non-market day, non-event day, you could fold up the retractable wings and, uh, and have two-way traffic through here if that was desirable. Another alternative, uh, would be to have a, a more permanent structure, uh, not the retractable awning. And this would, this would really entail, um, closing the street. Uh, and so this would be, uh, and it would have more seating area as well, uh, in this area to the, to the bottom, where you see the, the, uh, it's noted as parklit, and I'll explain that in just a second. So this is kind of what it could look like on Hickok Street, as, kind of, as a massing study, uh, looking at, you know, what would the building look like? Where could you have some outdoor seating? Uh, the stores would be on the right, potentially, and then you have farmers market structure, uh, on the left. Uh, you know, this, this is showing, uh, the farmers market, uh, structure on the left, and then, and then how it could be built out in a full, uh, full market. And this, uh, you could possibly do parking as well, uh, through here if it, if it was closed, but it would be pretty tight, and, uh, it, it may not be very, you know, with the 45-foot, um, street section, parking will be, uh, would be probably tight. We need to explore that, uh, tough. So if you weren't having a market, we did, we need to really explore that more, uh, because how cars would get in and out and operate within that space. Uh, we could do a, a lot of different materials, and we're exploring different materials. You could do kind of a timber structure, as you see in the top left, uh, and then, or the, the bottom left. Uh, or you could do a steel and wood structure. Uh, this would be a, a smaller scale, obviously, than the top right, uh, but that's a potential idea. And then the bottom right is, is a, is a steel structure, and, uh, and that really, you see the height of that really plays upon that elevation of the buildings around it. So that, that may be something to play with, as well as the height of it, depending on what, what is proposed with a new building, uh, on the corner, that the height of that structure may, may vary, uh, depending on what's best for the design. Uh, this is a parklit idea, uh, where you have an elevated, uh, kind of wood platform for seating and for tables, uh, outdoor umbrellas. And if the, if, with alternative B, if the road were to be, uh, closed, then that would allow for, for parklets on the street. And so this evening, we're not really asking, uh, to, there's still a lot of design left to do. We are in a position where we have, uh, have looked at the budget, and, and we are comfortable with submitting, the staff is comfortable submitting the ARC construction grant, uh, meeting under $500,000. So meaning that we would, we would look to, uh, satisfy the, uh, the funding with, uh, with our, uh, with the grant. And then we would use the matching funds that is required, uh, by, uh, by the regional commission, uh, through our, uh, through the monies that have already been allocated for the, the storm water drain project on Hickok Street. Uh, so, uh, this evening, uh, we're just asking council to, uh, to, if you have any questions on the resolution, or if it decides, be happy to answer them. Uh, David Hill is here from Hill Studio as well, Jennifer Willsey from the Regional Commission. Uh, so if, uh, if you'd like to ask any questions of us, uh, we're, we're here to, to answer those. But I think we do want to stress that the details would still be, uh, to be worked out. I mean, this, this is still a very long-term plan, you know, uh, to a degree, because we are looking at, uh, we are looking at really starting the drainage project in 21, 2021, and then, and then really completing the construction in 2022. If this were to be funded and council, uh, were to want to go this direction, we could dovetail this project. And so when that final, uh, pavement surface is going on for, uh, for the drainage project on Hickok Street with the new storm drain, then we are coming in with, uh, with the farmers market plan at that point. So, uh, we could possibly be operational in 2023.
So you're looking for a resolution from us to proceed with the grant application?
Yes, sir. It was in your packet.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the resolution to authorize the filing of a 2020 construction grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission.
I second it.
Motion of the second. Any comments, discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six out. Thank you very much. We are, uh, up to the reappointment of Karen Drake, Jeremy Williams, and Shirley Hallock to the Aquatic Advisory Board. Terms are from January 1, 2020, through December 31st, 2022. They're all present tonight, I do believe. Terry, go right ahead.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Barber, Town Council. I would like to request the reappointment of three of our aquatic advisory board members, who have served us very well for the past three years. They bring a lot of knowledge to the Aquatic Center team, dedication, and volunteer hours. Our chairman of the board is Mr. Jeremy Williams, and, and our two members of the board are Shirley Hallock, Shirley, and Karen Drake.
Thank you.
I just want to say, all, all three of them, Ms. Drake, um, Ms. Hallock, and Mr. Williams, they do more than serve our community just on the Aquatic Center. And this is a volunteer board. They, they don't get paid anything. They dedicate their time. And again, Jeremy's on, on the fire department as a volunteer. Ms. Hallock, you can't go to an event where she's not volunteering. And Ms. Drake, uh, when I was on Central Business District Committee, you led that committee in creating C-BAC, and, uh, which was an acronym for the Central Business District Committee. That really got us started, in my opinion, into what we're seeing right now. And that was all volunteer, dedicated, many hours of each one of your time, and I appreciate what you've done for our town.
You know, I'd like to add a few comments, too, that, um, as a liaison person, I'm there at every meeting, and all three of these people have good ideas consistently, month after month, about ways to improve the Aquatic Center, and, and if there are things that are not going right, you know, uh, things to give to Ms. Caldwell, and to tell her maybe that she wants to look into it. And it's a very, uh, well-run, uh, program, and all, all, all six of the people on, on the board do a, a great job, and I think the town should feel very good about that.
And Ms. Caldwell, would you mind mentioning, just so when people watch this again, that if they are interested, how they could get in touch to express an interest of being on a board?
Typically, what happens when we have a reappointment to the board, I review their dedication, their service to our community and to the Aquatic Center, and then I approach them each individually and ask them if they are interested in serving again. And I kind of just take that into consideration, and it's really hard to kind of steer a different route when the team is just amazing, and they come up with some great ideas, they guide our department. You know, it's just, it's, for me, it's like having another employee. You know, that's how dedicated they are. And because they each have success in their occupation within our community, they can bring that information to the Aquatic Center. It's absolutely amazing. So it's hard for me to kind of want to steer a different direction when I have the success that, that we're looking for.
Well, I think in, in the instance, when we do have a vacancy, that is advertised.
Yes, and now we do interview. It's advertised, and then we do interview. Actually, I don't interview that. The Aquatic Advisory Board interviews for the position.
Which we've had vacancies on all these boards, and we fill them.
Yes.
And I'd like to add that they're an advisory board, so they're not, you know, they're not a voting group.
Very good. Let's do that.
They're simply an advisory board.
Okay.
I, since, I was going to say this till the very end, but when, on my comments, but I thought might fit in here well, right now, to show you the activity that's going on at the Aquatic Center. I think everybody knows there was a swim meet there this past week, and they had 600 local kids swimming in. And now this coming weekend, they're going to have 1,100 swimmers here at, at the Aquatic Center. I mean, to handle 1,100 kids on a, a weekend is between the 13th and the 15th. And, uh, you might want to bring up too, just to show you another activity that, uh, on New Year's, we made a pool dozen on December 30th. And do you want to take that, Eric?
Mm-hmm. The New Year's Flash. It's to be our third year of our New Year's Flash, and we drop a huge ball from the 10-meter tower and have a countdown. So it's, it's basically designed for families and children. At nine o'clock, the doors close, and everyone goes home. So it's an early New Year's, uh, before the New Year's Eve for the parents. So.
But it is New Year's somewhere in the world, right?
Well, Ms. Mayor, I would like to make a motion then that the three people are reappointed to the Aquatic Center board.
And I second that for sure.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make it more formal and list their names in the motion, please, for clarification. Mr. Hubbard, that one.
Oh, yes, sir. It'll be fine.
So the motion is to reappoint?
The three individuals, and that would be Jeremy Williams, Shirley Hallock, and Karen Drake.
Thank you.
Wait up a second.
Second again. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six eight. Reappointment of Jessica Davis and Hill Johnson to the Christiansburg Planning Commission. Terms are from January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2023. And I believe Hill, you're here. Okay. Oh, it's not, sorry. Okay.
Mayor and Council, I would like to request that Hill and Jessica Davis be reappointed to the Planning Commission. Jessica joined us in 2017. She serves on the Convergents Plan Subcommittee. Hill has been with us for a number of years. Hill predates me. Serves as well on the Development Subcommittee and is currently serving as the Vice Chair to the Planning Commission. They are thorough commissioners, they are thoughtful commissioners, they are a pleasure to work with.
And they have attended all the training certified by the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to reappoint Jessica Davis and Hill Johnson to the Christiansburg Planning Commission, term from January 1, 2020 to December 31st, 2023.
I second it. And I've worked with these folks and they're great people to work with too.
I think, at least I hang my hat on that we have a great planning commission, very dynamic planning commission. So when you guys do make a referral to us, I do take that very seriously and I appreciate it. Hill, you serve on the Regional Commission as well, still, right? So we appreciate your service there as well. Thank you.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let's leave a list. I know that there was concern or question about the amount of the attorney bills, but I think that was explained in the fact that there is two separate bills, one because pending litigation and is always billed separately. And that is usually insurance will, depending insurance reimburses that thing?
No, it's a contract matter.
Okay, it's a contract matter. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion in a second that we pay the bills as presented. Thomas, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Bills are approved. That one, thank you. Approval of the Safe Ride Home Program for New Year's Eve.
Council certification of 2020.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's, that is correct. Council certification of 2020 fire officers. Did it have a list of those officers? We'll read those names. Assistant Chief is Danny Yop, Captain Granton Thompson, First Lieutenant Forrest Redd, Second Lieutenant Brandon Turner, Secretary Treasurer is Donnie Reed, Assistant Secretary Treasurer is David Akers, the Training Officer is Todd Chrisley, Engineers Pete Helsom, John Linkus, Scott Phillips, John Epple, Mike Moore, and Brad Woolly.
I'll make a motion that council approves the council certification of 2020 fire officers.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk? Oh, sorry, any comments or questions? Nothing to say? Thank you all. Probably about 500 years' worth of service on this page right here when you add it all up, but anyway, pretty close. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, if you'd call it over.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's six eight. The approval of the Safe Ride Home Program for New Year's Eve, which I believe is very, very successful.
I do have one thing to let you know, that the Hoopdy Ride is having issues with their insurance renewal and they said that if they weren't able to renew their insurance by the end of the, end of the year, of course, they wouldn't be able to provide it. They should give us an answer by the beginning of next week and we would, we could advertise after that date, so.
Okay. All right. But this is just for the program?
Correct.
I make a motion to approve the Safe Ride Home Program for New Year's Eve?
I'll second.
A motion in a second.
So if they can't perform their?
If they can't do it, then we wouldn't do the program.
When are they going to listen?
Next week.
Next week. So we still have a little? Not December 30.
Right. So what we're asking for now is, because we don't have another meeting, is authorization, but it may end up falling through.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully not.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's six eight. Thank you. Discussion regarding Southwest Virginia High School Invitational Swim Meet Facility Rental Fees. Ms. Showalter?
Yeah, I put this on there. Ms. Brown, our Coach Brown's here, Amy, who coaches the middle school and high school teams. And as we heard from Mr. Hubbard, the large, probably one of the largest youth events or teenage event that we have at the Aquatic Center happened over the weekend. And I guess what I was looking at is it's Pulaski High School and Christiansburg High School and they said they have 1,100 swimmers that come in. And this is actually something I wanted to bring to council when Ms. Brown's here to answer any questions about the event, if anybody has those. But I was just wondering if council would be interested in sort of an in-kind sponsorship of this event on behalf of our students at CHS so they can put this event on and live using monies to rent, but to pay officials and buy awards, something for council to consider.
Who gets the profit for the event?
Amy, would you mind?
The profits are shared between Christiansburg High School and Pulaski County High School swim teams. So the money goes into those accounts and then the swim teams use those money to help fund things like if there's a travel meet or some supplies. And Christiansburg also supplements coaching with some things that we do for diving. So it just kind of goes into basically going right back to the kids to kind of help those support the things that we do for those teams.
Thank you.
Being a parent, my kids did not play any primary sport. Primary sports, they're awesome. We all watch them, basketball, baseball, football. But sports like swimming, cross-country, soccer, things of that nature, these events that, especially what Amy has down there, this is what funds them to be able to travel and go to other invitations, which enhances the, these kids' experiences. So if you're familiar with high school sports at all, your top three, basketball, baseball, and football, get the money. Everybody else has to earn their own way. And to me, this would help enhance our program. One of the main things council's gone with years ago is looking at our participation of our citizens and their, and their children in the pool. That's what we are gauging our success rate at right now. So I just thought this would be something, I didn't just want to throw it on council, but since the event was just on this weekend and had over 1,000 participants in, I just thought it would be a great thing that, an in-kind thing that we can do, sort of co-sponsor this event for them.
And this would be for Montgomery County schools only?
The whole event?
Christiansburg? Christiansburg.
Christiansburg?
Okay.
What is, what is the cost? What are we, what are we talking about?
Total contract amounts, $3,225.
Did you say 4,000?
Yes.
3,000.
Sorry, 3,000. 3,225.
3,200.
And it's paid by the two schools?
Yes.
Terry, do we have any other schools that do a similar thing, you know, as far as we're talking fairness across the board? Is this the only event that Christiansburg pays money for?
No, they do pay for other events. That one swim meet and then they also pay for the meet rentals, which could potentially be, depending on the meets, $1,500. There's five different meets coming up in December and through January, which is $1,500.
Combined?
Combined.
Okay.
$300 per meet. The one in reference, the Southwest Virginia High School Invitational Meet, is the bigger one and it is in conjunction with Pulaski and that's why the fee for that is a little higher, 32, exactly 30, $3,250, $3,225.
So the participating teams, other than Blacksburg or Christiansburg and Pulaski, do these teams pay a fee to come to this thing? And what fee do they pay?
We charge $12 a swimmer to pay, which is pretty in line with what other invitationals charge. We also open it up to where it's the beginning of the season invitationals, so we don't put a limit on swimmers who, or teams as to how many they can enter per event. So it's a really, it's a favorite event for a lot of high schools to come to because you can have some of, you can have state champions, racing state champions, all the way down to swimmers who are having their very first swim meet, have a good race. So it's, it's a, it's a really, for me, it's one of my favorite meets because we really do see the full range of swimming and gives everybody a chance to come out. So we do, we do charge that fee and we try to keep it appropriate to help us cover our costs, but also we try to keep it reasonable because, you know, many high schools are on a budget and we want to make sure it's accessible to as many swimmers as possible.
So, Brandy, is it my understanding that the high school allows us to use our parking lots for free for any meets that we hold?
Correct. So not meets, that would be practice. So we have, we have an agreement with Christiansburg High School to use?
We do not charge Christiansburg High School for lanes to use to practice, to whatever.
Right.
Is that correct?
But for swim meets, we do. And just kind of wanted to mention too, for some of these meets that are put on by Christiansburg High School, it can be three to six different high schools, Bradford, Carroll County, Pulaski, Giles, Northside. So we, you know, it draws a lot of community, do they, in the region. So it's pretty interesting. And I wanted to just add to, to recognize Amy for kind of stepping outside of the box and she has started a middle school swim team, which whoever would have thought that we would have a middle school swim team here in our community. And it's because of people like Amy. So she puts a lot of volunteer effort and hours into, into the Aquatic Center and the swim team.
So what is the purpose? Were you asking us to waive that $3,200 fee, Henry, or are we asking to?
And since this is an annual event, that we do it every year.
For this particular event?
Yes.
This particular?
This brings, in my opinion, the most swimmers and the most Southwest Virginia swimmers into our, into our Aquatic Center.
Are you proposing the full 3,200 or Christiansburg's half? The whole?
Yes.
What, does this affect the revenue of the Aquatic Center?
Yes, it'll be 3,200.
In-kind is a loss revenue.
Yes.
Is there questions?
Does this $3,200, does it affect the revenue that is generated by the Aquatic Center?
Everything affects revenue. I mean, you know, that's what we try to do, but there's certain things in our community that we, we have to support our youth. And, you know, we built our facility and if it's some systems to the Montgomery County Public School system for our town, Christiansburg High School athletes to participate, you know, then how does that cost you? Now, we have lifeguards that are going to be there. They're going to be there, maybe there for a swim meet or not, right? And we have to have lifeguards guarding the water and, you know, so I feel that there's certain items, there's very few that we ask, there's very few things that we waive, hardly any. We'll give away a few passes once in a while, but it's, it's, we've been very revenue push-driven at the Aquatic Center and this may be something that would be an in-kind gesture.
What is your recommendation? Do you have one?
I would recommend that we probably look at this every year. This year, the fee has been paid since the meet has just passed. So maybe it is something that we could approve for the next year and then I recommend that we look at that every year and decide if that's something that you're interested in.
That one event? That one event?
That one event, yep. And it's called?
What, 600 swimmers is that it or?
About 700.
700 of them.
Yep, it's a big meet.
Okay.
I'd like to throw something out there. Is, in my opinion only, I feel like the Aquatic Center is paid for by tax dollars. So to me, it only makes sense to give the benefit back to the parents that are paying those taxes for their kids to swim in the meet. I am a little concerned about Pulaski getting the benefit because the Pulaski people are not paying our taxes, but if I could even recommend waiving the meet rentals for $1,500, which is roughly the portion that Pulaski would need to pay, then it would be up to Christiansburg as to how they divvied up that money, if they wanted it all to cover Pulaski, Christiansburg, or truly just their events. But I do feel like those who do not pay into our tax coffers may not reap the benefits of a free service.
So specifically, what are you proposing? Oh, you do support this?
Yes.
I can support this.
I'd say if you haven't been down to the Aquatic Center and seen those kids swim, you know, we don't have to worry about kids being in gangs, we don't have to worry about them floating, you know? I mean, they put out 110%. I was down there this morning and just, it's unreal what they're, what they're doing. And it's just good for our town, really, to see our young people doing what they're doing.
Do we have a formal motion?
Do, yeah.
So I would do a formal motion that we waive Christiansburg High School's half of the rental fee for next year's event.
I'd like to throw in the rentals, if that's okay.
What?
I'd like to throw in the rentals as well, if council agrees. The 1,500?
That's what we do.
Oh, okay.
That's the half. That's half.
They're half of the rental.
Oh, gotcha. I'm sorry, misunderstood.
A second.
A motion in a second.
Just to make it clear, we're not paying for the Pulaski, just for Christiansburg.
We will in-kind. Whoever co-sponsors.
Got you, got you.
Which I assume will be some type of in-kind service from the swim teams for the working or whatever? Is that what, or we're just going to just waive their entrance fee?
No, no, we're, we are doing, waiving half of the rental fee Christiansburg High School's has.
Okay, for the Southwest Virginia Invitational Swim Meet?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll manage to include that.
Great idea.
So can I make sure, since we're clarifying? I thought there was two things, Terry. Is there, is there, there's 3,225 and then there's a 1,500?
Correct, but I believe Councilman Showalter was asking for just this one swim meet, am I correct?
Yes, per year.
Okay, so not those other rentals then?
Right.
Just the one?
If, I would, I would, I think this would be, this is the largest one, this is one that probably puts more money into our coffers outside of just the rental fee with students and their parents going to eat and staying in town. But I would go with this one, this is the largest one. And we can always explore others in the future.
For next year?
Yeah.
I support it.
But this is just for next year. We can open more discussions in 2020, for the 2021 event.
Okay. Good motions, seconds?
I'll second.
I think we did, we got all that. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
It passes. Changes to the small purchase policy. Val, is that yours, or is this the one we've talked about? We've sent the emails.
Yes, this is the one that the emails have gone out on several times, to draft what the specific changes in the policy are. Part of this was driven by the changes in the Virginia Public Procurement Act. And after bringing those changes in and discussion with Council, we came up with kind of the draft that we have today. One of the primary provisions of it were, require that if a service is offered within the town of Christiansburg, that a boat be solicited from that business. The other is to actually reduce the level at which you can only have one boat, you have to have two boats. Public Procurement Act allows one boat up to $10,000. This requires three over $1,500. So we're actually tightening the restrictions a little bit more than what the Procurement Act allows. And that's primary, the changes. The other very wordy change was to put into policy what we've had in practice for a long time, is who's authorized to sign purchase orders and contracts up to $100,000, and that Randy would only be authorized to sign a contract over $100,000 after it was approved by Council. Primary changes.
Okay. Comments?
I'll make the first motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to pass. Any other comments or questions? It is a very lengthy document, but I think she's, the changes that she brought to us in the email form, I think are very clear, and I think it makes it a little smoother for, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's six oh. Staff reports, Town Manager?
In regards to town attorney interviews, I know, of course, you'll have the reappointment up at the reorganization meeting, but I was just curious if you would want to do interviews the week prior. Of course, the next council meeting is the January 14th. Did speak to both potential representatives, and they said that they could be available on January 9th, which is the Thursday prior of Council, that's Council meetings.
That works for me. Steve?
Hello?
Yeah, I'm looking now.
January 9?
I think that...
January 9?
No.
Okay.
You should wait until the following week, please, till the 14th, because the 14th...
That's when we...
That's when our next town council meeting is, so it would have to be done prior to that.
Can you move it to the Monday or something?
I can try to fill out dates if you like.
That's what?
I can try to find suitable dates if you like, but I know the Tuesday prior did not work.
We should probably decide tonight.
Yes. Rest of that month.
It takes a year, all week?
I'm going to be gone until the 14th of the year.
January 2nd work?
The what?
January 2nd?
No. After the 11th.
She'll be gone the first week.
Until the 13th, correct, the Monday prior.
You can do it the 12th. I don't even know what day it's about, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16.
It's on a Sunday.
It's a Sunday.
I feel like we need to meet before the vote, and Ms. Hicks, if you come back on the 13th, the day before council, that's, that's really difficult to do, so I think it depends on the attorneys, when they're available as well.
Would you want me to see if they're available on the 13th, and try to set something on the 13th, if that will work?
What time are you back?
I'm back on the 11th. Well, I will say the 12th, so that's the week.
So the 13th is a Monday?
Mm-hmm, that 13th, I think.
Would you try to set something up for the 12th?
12th Sunday.
13th.
13th.
Sunday is the 12th.
13th, okay. And can or can't do it, then we'll have to back up and tie it.
Yes, okay.
All right.
Just remind you that financial disclosure, so due February 3rd, Michelle will send you an email on this, just letting you know, of course, we're not going to be meeting until next year. Hope you all have happy holidays, happy year.
Thank you.
Good. Town attorneys?
No report, ma'am.
Any other staff members? Council reports, and I'll start with Mr. Collins.
Okay. I've been asked 100 times, how to feel to lose, you know, blah, 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 and when you have a family like I got... Okay, go ahead. No. You can't feel sorry for yourself, because I got four kids, and I got 10 grandkids, and they're great people, great people. One of my sons, well, I got one son here tonight, another son was with me, I want to get the results, and he said, Dick, can you take a few steps back? And I said, well, yeah, why? He said, we don't want to be seen with somebody who just lost, so, you know, so that's the kind of family I got. So you laugh, and you're all, you know, you know, but I'm going to be doing the Lung Transplant Foundation, and the reason my son is here tonight is, we're going to UVA tomorrow, with, tonight for a meeting tomorrow morning, and we're meeting with the Lung Transplant Team. And try to make it grow and help more people, you know? And these folks are great people, y'all need to keep them up here. We could copy the whole lot, you know, a little bit to Hall, and thank you.
Very good. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have a... I'll report for you.
I scribbled down just a few thoughts here, as I did when Mr. Hall left Council. I want to, first of all, congratulate Ms. Hicks, we look forward to having you on the team, and are interested in your contributions, and I mean that from the standpoint that you, the people have spoken, and you're, and so we welcome you to the team. And I'd like to say just a few comments on Mr. Collins, and these are just some, the things, the words that come to mind when I think of Mr. Collins. First of all, my father says that we're all suffering a terminal condition, and some of us have more reminders than others, and Mr. Collins falls into that category. The value of time, we all, you know, Mr. Collins knows more than several of, most of us, what the value of time is, and serving here has been how he chooses to spend his time, and that says a lot. To me, it does, because that's the most valuable thing we spend, especially with where he's been. So some, Mr. Collins has served the town with honor, with professionalism, with sincerity, with enthusiasm, with a big heart, and with big dreams. And quite honestly, he's the kind of guy that if anyone in this room needed some help, he would give you the shirt off his back, he would do whatever he could do to help. And Brock, you have a great father. We will miss your common sense, your sense of humor, and your passion for Christiansburg. So thank you, Mr. Collins, and welcome, Ms. Hicks.
Thanks, buddy.
Mr. Hubbard?
I, I, Brad has said...
Twenty buck though, you're right.
Twenty months from me.
Twenty buck though, yes. Yeah.
First thing he said to me before the meeting tonight, he says, I don't want to hear any of the Second Amendment stuff going. So I would like to tell you, whatever Brad has just said, it has been my pleasure, it really has been my pleasure. I have enjoyed all four years, and it's just been a pleasure just to be on the same bank here with you. I would like to say two other things here about the Christmas lights. They're great here. I think it looks to me like we've done a better job this year than we've done in the past. It really looks good out there, and I hope you, you tell all your people that, you know, it really does look great. And Andrew, I wanted to say something, too, to you concerning your report you just had about with the future, but I really feel, I've been around Christiansburg for a while, and I know that we have done more in downtown Christiansburg this year than we've ever done before, especially this fall. And you and the Parks and Rec, you know, need to really take a bow, really, because it's really, it's what the people want, and we're trying to do it to help. And that's all I have.
All right. I'd like to mention our PR department, our event department, and our fire department for having Santa on the Christmas truck this year. That was quite amazing, it was a lot of fun decorating the truck, and you've never seen so many grown men pretty much love children and just get into it, and it was a beautiful event. And I understand it was Mr. Demmett's idea, as well as Melissa, so I want to extend the thank you to them for that. And thank you, Chief, for embracing the idea, appreciate that. And I'd also like to comment on Mr. Collins. It's really hard to go after some of the great things that people have said, but I've had two years with you, and I have to say that I have learned a lot from you, sir, and I appreciate your guidance, and I appreciate your support, and whether we agreed on the topic or not, we always had a chance to communicate. So you will be missed, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And since this is on video, I'd like to, whatever you celebrate, to all the citizens, I wish you the best of this season. Thank you.
Ms. Shawalter?
I appreciate it, man. Harry, you didn't think you were going to get out here without me, so...
Yeah, I did, I did.
This council report thing, I always think, I haven't got it down yet, I thought we're reporting on our committee's progress or something like that, so I usually skip over and wait till the end anyway, so. I haven't learned, folks, but one day I will. But Harry, I'm going to tell you, if I could sum you up, you're a class act, okay? This, this man right here, he would call me and say, hey, look, Christiansburg Wrestling Team's coming in today, you need to get your butt down here with me, okay? And he would, I'll be over there to get you, and that's where Brock was that one day, too, that we went down there. But Harry, if there's any person that gives to the town and will continue to give and support the town, I know Mr. Collins is, and it's been a pleasure serving with you, you've been a tireless servant to this community, and it is appreciated. And that's it for me, you will be missed.
You got to kill him, but thank you.
Okay, a couple of reminders, Christmas Parade is Friday night at 6, well, 7 o'clock. Tree lighting is around 6:30, 6:45, is that correct, Travis? We will, if, if, we will walk as a council, families, Joanna, you're certainly, your group, certainly welcome to join us to walk the Christmas Parade. And it's, you know, the events, I think there may be an alternate date at this point. We hope to be able to get this thing off Friday night.
All the weather.
The weather is a little bit iffy, but I did talk to Public Works, they're going to brine the streets, so they're talking about ice, and so we should, you know, the streets should be okay. I think it'd be quite, quite fun to see some snow for Christmas, on that Christmas parade. And the other thing, and I have, Ham, would you, would you join me up here for a minute?
No.
My friend, it's been an honor to serve with you for the last four, plus the eight years, all, eight years altogether. You've been a great coach, Sanlot, you've grown up in the area, and on behalf of the town council, instead of an old sticky resolution, what we would like to do is I'd like to present you with this memento for your service, says Harry Collins, saying, for your service to the citizens of Christiansburg. Town Council, 2016 to 2019, Planning Commission, 2012 to 2019.
Thanks, buddy.
Harry, you will be missed by a long...
Thanks, buddy. I appreciate you putting the budget.
I know, I know.
You can put this down, Daniel, it's going to money on the books.
You know what you can do, Harry? You can donate Harry Collins space plate on that clock.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
All right. I would like to echo all the thoughts about Mr. Collins and his service and dedication to the town, not just the last eight years, but I don't know how many kids he's coached over the, over the years, and worked very hard for the lung transplant. I want to also echo Ms. Sachs's remarks about, you know, it doesn't matter whether you celebrate Christmas, whatever, we just want you to have a happy season, and we shall see you all...
Next year.
Next year, now. Is there any other business to come from Council?